Good afternoon. My name is Ed Bernard, and I serve as the Chair of the Financial Accounting Foundation. I'd like to welcome our stakeholders to tuning into today's meeting. Today's meeting will include reports from the FASB Chair, the GASB Chair, the FAF Executive Director, and the FAF Treasurer. We'll also receive a report about the latest activities of the Governmental Accounting Standards Advisory Council, and we'll hear from the Trustees Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee. Before we get to the reports, I'm pleased to announce a number of important appointments. The FAF Board of Trustees has appointed four new members: Lara Abrash, Luis Aguilar, Pratt-Bott, and Paul Quincy. Their terms will begin on January 1st, 2025, and conclude on December 31st, 2029. Lara Abrash is the Chair of Deloitte U.S., the largest professional services organization in the United States. She was elected to this role in June 2023 after serving four years as Chair and Chief Executive Officer of Deloitte Intouch LLP, where she was responsible for overseeing the U.S. Audit and Assurance Business. Luis Aguilar served as a Commissioner at the U.S. Securities and Exchange Commission from July 31, 2008 to December 31, 2015. He was originally appointed by President George W. Bush and was reappointed by President Barack Obama in 2011. He became the eighth longest-serving Commissioner in the SEC history and is one of only three Commissioners to have been nominated by two U.S. Presidents from two different political parties. He worked to modernize the SEC's rules to reflect innovation and changes that had long transformed capital markets. He's also recognized as a leader at the nexus of cybersecurity, investor protection, and publicly traded companies. Pratt-Bott is a seasoned Fortune 100 Senior Technology Executive, Public Company Board Member, and is a financial expert with significant experience with large global organizations, strategy, operations, governance, enterprise risk management, and investor relations. He's the former Senior Vice President, Chief Accounting Officer, and Corporate Controller for Cisco Systems, where he led a global team of over 1,000 finance professionals across Cisco's business. In addition, he serves on the Governing Board of the Center for Audit Quality, which plays a critical role in maintaining investor trust in the capital markets. Paul Quincy has over 40 years of asset management industry experience as an equities investor and senior business leader. He serves as the Global Head of Equities for J.P. Morgan Asset Management, leading the global team of 600 professionals and acts as co-chair of the Asset Management Investment Committee, with responsibility for approving investment decisions across all asset classes. The Board also appointed a new member of the GASB, Robert Scott. Robert will succeed Brian Caputo. Robert's term will begin on July 1st, 2025, and conclude June 30th, 2030. He'll then be eligible for consideration of an additional five-year term. Robert brings over 35 years of experience to this role in auditing, reviewing, and preparing local government financial statements. He also previously served on the GASSAC for 11 years, joining the Advisory Council in 2011 and becoming GASSAC Chair in 2015. He stepped down from the GASSAC in 2021. We're very pleased to have Robert working with us again in this new capacity as a member of the GASB. Today, I also have the pleasure of announcing the reappointment of GASB member Diane Ray to a second five-year term, which will begin July 1st, 2025. Diane will complete her service to the GASB on June 30th, 2030. I'd also like to announce the reappointment of Robert Hamilton as our GASSAC Chair, who will complete his next term of service on December 31st, 2026. And I have one more appointment to note. The Trustees have named Suzanne Lowenson as the new GASSAC Vice Chair. Suzanne is an Associate Professor of Accounting and Director of the Master of Accountancy Program at the University of Vermont Grossman School of Business. She's a current GASSAC member representing the American Accounting Association and will serve in this role for one year, completing her service as Vice Chair on December 31st of next year. I'd like to officially welcome all new appointees and congratulate our reappointed Board and Council members. Later in the meeting, we'll take a moment to thank those who will be completing their service for our organization. But with that for now, let's move to the regular agenda. The first item of business is to approve the minutes from the Board's August 13th meeting. May I have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you. Now we'll move to reports for the FASB, the GASB, and GASSAC. FASB Chair Rich Jones.
Great, thank you, Ed. Welcome, everyone. Please find a copy of the third quarter chair report in your materials. I did want to spend a few minutes to update you on recent activity since our last meeting. During the third quarter, the FASB issued exposure drafts on three topics. They included derivative scope refinements, also known as the "not a derivative" project, hedge accounting improvements, and share-based consideration payable to a customer. We also completed our work on the conceptual framework, a longstanding project of the FASB during that third quarter. Since the end of the quarter up to the date of this meeting, we have also issued final accounting standards on our disaggregation income statement expense project. We have also issued exposure drafts related to our projects on accounting for software costs, determining the accounting acquirer, and interim reporting disclosure requirements. We also have four additional exposure drafts expected to be issued before year-end, including exposure drafts on accounting for environmental credit programs, accounting for government grants, which will be out later today, and codification improvements, as well as a final standard on induced conversions. In addition, we are continuing to use our research agenda to gather additional input for our Board as it relates to potential future projects. In that regard, we recently issued an invitation to comment on financial KPIs and are planning on issuing an additional invitation to comment on accounting for intangibles before the end of the year. The conclusion of 2024 is also an important milestone here at the FASB. Based on the work that we've accomplished related to the projects we've had on our agenda, all that were a result of the extensive stakeholder outreach we performed a few years ago, it's really time for us to do that again. So we'll also be initiating and issuing a document related to agenda outreach so our stakeholders can tell us what we should be working on and what should be our highest priorities going forward. I know I went through a lot of documents, but I want to tell you that we've carefully considered the timing of release of all of these documents, their scope and their comment periods, so that our stakeholders can provide the input we need to create high-quality accounting standards. This includes setting comment periods for extended periods of time. For example, the comment period on financial KPIs is over five and a half months. Moving forward on all these projects demonstrates the significant progress we have made on the projects our stakeholders identified as most important to them, and the important input we received as part of our prior agenda outreach project. On behalf of my colleagues here at the FASB, I'd like to thank you for supporting us in fulfilling our mission and be happy to take any questions.
Any questions, Rich? Manju?
Rich, I have a question about all the exposure drafts that are out there now, and you alluded that you are taking into account by extending the comment period to enable stakeholders to respond to, you know, provide comments on many of these. And I know it's very important for you to receive feedback from stakeholders. What other things are you doing so that stakeholders don't feel, you know, hindered in their ability to comment because there are just so many out there at the same time?
Sure. And while I certainly mentioned there were a lot of exposure drafts there, some of those the comment periods actually have already closed or are closing. So that's one category. For others, we actually thought it was important to put them out in our stakeholders' hands. And instead of setting a comment period based on, hey, this document should take about 30 days for someone to respond, we looked at the totality of all the documents we have out there, and we extended comment periods. And the thought was, we're better off putting this in our stakeholders' hands, extending the comment period so they have more time to process, versus holding them back and then issuing them with shorter comment periods later. So at the end of the day, when you think about the response times, the responses are probably the same, really what we're doing is putting them in our stakeholders' hands for a longer period of time. To be fair, not every stakeholder will comment on every single one of these, right? Some of them, multiple will apply, but others will look at them and they'll pick and choose on the ones that they think actually make sense for them to opine on. The other thing I would stress, Manju, while we have comment periods in here, if at any point in time a stakeholder says, hey, I can't hit that deadline, there's something, I have a conflict, or I don't have time to write a letter, just reach out to us. We put them in touch with our project team, they get their input, and that input gets to our Board. By the same instance, if somebody misses a comment letter deadline, we don't put the blinders on with that deadline, to the extent that we get input. We look at it, we do set deadlines so that we have a way to move forward, but we're always receptive to input no matter where we are in the project.
Thank you.
Other questions for Rich?
Thanks, Ed. Rich, I know you just, or FASB just released its fourth annual Investor Outreach Report, and in the last few years, FASB, you and FASB have done so much, really, to do investor outreach, and that's not insignificant at all. How do you know what you're doing is effective? How do you measure that?
Yeah, no, good question. And obviously, our Investor Outreach Report really focuses on the different interactions we have with the investors. I see where you see it's effective is, one, it pulls them into our process, and it's very important that we have investors as part of our process because the output of our standards is something they're using to make their capital allocation decisions. So I would say that making sure they're part of our process is very important. I think we also illustrated in there, we focus on the outcomes of our accounting standards and dialogue with those investors, that's speaking to them in their language, and that's incorporated all throughout our standard-setting process. When you look at some of the projects that I've talked to about here today, you'll notice we phrase the case for change. And sometimes it's reducing costs and complexity, other times it's providing that enhanced information to an investor. You'll see that as part of the case for change, and I think that's showing through.
Anything else for Rich? Great, thanks, Rich. Now we'll turn to GASB Chair Joel Black.
Thanks, Ed, and thanks, everyone. I too will be providing a report that you have the written version of in your materials. During the quarter, the Board issued Statement 104 on certain capital asset disclosures, providing users of the government financial report with more details about certain types of capital assets, such as right-to-use type of assets and capital assets held for sale. At the Board, we continue to be very aware of the shortage of public sector resources within accounting and financial reporting. The Board has set a really high bar for us to ask our stakeholders to use those valuable resources on an amendment, addition to GAAP. We want that project, that changing GAAP, to be a really significant improvement. So with the issuance of Statement 104, we have only five projects left on our agenda, each of which we think meets that high bar. Of those projects, at the very end of the third quarter, we issued a preliminary views due process document on our infrastructure asset project. It has an over 100-day comment period, which ends January 17th of 2025. And then just last week, which is actually fourth quarter, not third quarter, but we issued, the Board approved, the issuance of an exposure draft on our subsequent events project with a comment period in late February of '25, and an exposure draft of an update to our implementation guidance with a comment period of January 24th of 2025. Like Rich just described for the FASB, we are conscious, again, of the resource constraints and that these are a number of due process documents coming out for public comment. We do try to have longer comment periods. We extended the comment period beyond a financial reporting crunch that exists usually in the December timeframe. And like Rich described for FASB, we'll always take comments and thoughts from our stakeholders. So we look forward to their input on these important projects. Also during the quarter, we approved the tech plan for the final third of 2024. No additional standard-setting projects added, but we did add one pre-agenda research project for revenue and expense recognition disclosures related to revenue and expense recognition, that if the Board, you know, approves it, once we get the research, would likely be a companion project to our existing revenue and expense project, which only deals with recognition. Additionally, in that tech plan, we added cybersecurity disclosures as a monitoring activity. This was really in response to our Advisory Council, the GASSAC's prioritization, with that being the second highest priority item. So we are beginning to look at how cybersecurity risks should or maybe shouldn't be included in a government's external financial report, and we will, you know, go through that activity and research and bring that back to the Board and decide what, if anything, we might could do from an accounting standard-setting process related to that. The highest priority item from the GASSAC was electronic financial reporting. We continue to monitor things that are going on in that environment, how technology's changing the government financial report, including continuing work on our financial reporting taxonomy that relatedly includes us monitoring the Financial Data Transparency Act. So that is my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Any questions for Joel? Manju?
Joel, one of the major projects that GASB is working on is also the FDTA. Can you please give us an update on GASB's activities with respect to the Financial Data Transparency Act?
Sure, thanks, Manju. I think when we met last, the joint rulemaking had been proposed from the FSCAG agencies, and since we last met, we did, as an organization, respond to one aspect of that joint proposal. So our response or comment letter to the SEC was limited to the Joint Resolutions Proposal related to accounting and financial reporting taxonomies, in which they said jointly, we're not going to do anything related to those taxonomies, we're going to leave that up to specific agency rulemaking as the FDTA progresses. We agreed with that, and that was our comment letter, was due to the various even gaps that might apply to the different agencies covered by FDTA. We thought it made sense for them to not jointly propose something, but rather limit it, allow it to go to the individual agency rulemaking. So that was our comment letter and the latest on the FDTA.
Beth, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. So my question relates to the infrastructure asset project, but first I want to thank you and the GASB for moving this project forward. It was something that was very high in the GASSAC agenda and other stakeholders. So again, my thanks for that. So my question is, you're in the middle of the comment period for the preliminary review or in the comment period. Can you shed any light on the type of comments you've had so far, or where do you think that's heading?
Sure, Beth. We are very early in the comment period, and we typically don't get comment letters until the very end, but we do actually have already six comment letters, most all of them coming from the electronic input form, most of them coming from small governments or small accounting firms, who I think if you read those comments, are saying they see the benefits that could come from the additional disclosures included, but they're very worried about the costs and the burden that that's placing. I think that's relatively consistent with information we've gotten as a Board from our Advisory Council and the different stakeholders. I think the users see the value of the information. In fact, they might just want to even go a little further, but peers are probably worried about the burden. And so this proposal was the Board's best balance of those, but we look forward to the rest of the feedback, and we'll continue to contemplate it all. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions for Joel? Seeing none, I'm sorry.
If I could, just real quick, Joel, you know, FASB and GASB seem like they're so similar in so many ways, and yet they're different in certain ways. And one of the ways that, at least it would appear to me, is the emphasis that GASB has on education. Number one, is that fair to say? And number two, is it because of the different, the variety of expertise of those who are trying to implement GASB standards? What drives that?
I do, it is, you notice that in our individual mission statements, we include education in our mission statement. I do think that it's important, you know, with the kind of dearth of resources in the public sector, that we help as much as we can. So we do that through education, you know, Q and As. We're always trying to help our different stakeholders understand the standards, make it easier to implement the standards. So we do invest a lot of time going around to conferences and presenting and giving GASB updates and providing information and trying to educate. We have varied users. We don't just have investors who are pretty knowledgeable, we have legislative bodies and citizens who may not be quite as sophisticated. So we are always constantly thinking about, how do we educate people on the value of the financial report and for them to understand it better?
Great, thanks. Any other questions? Thanks, Joel. So Alan Skelton, the GASB Technical Director, will deliver the GASSAC report.
Thank you, sir, and I appreciate that. If you'll see in Rob's report, he covered our July 8/9 meeting in the report he gave you in August, and also in this report, he touched base on what we're going to do and what we're going to cover at our November meeting. Well, since this report was sent to y'all, we've had the November meeting, and I can quite happily say that everything that's in this list and the agenda for that list, we actually covered and we actually accomplished those items. I'll touch on one thing I think is very relevant. Joel mentioned that we issued an ED for subsequent events, and we issued an ED for the implementation guidance update. And we talk about this all the time, but this was really timely because it happened last week. We had the GASSAC meeting on, we had the GASSAC meeting the very next day, we talked about these EDs. In that meeting, we actually made some changes of both of those exposure drafts because the comments were made at the GASSAC meeting. It was really nice that Rob was in the room. So Rob, actually, at some points, I think we even called him out a couple of times that he was in the room, but we hear a lot, do comments matter? And I think it was really, really timely that we went directly from a GASSAC meeting into a Board meeting the next day and made changes in that exposure draft before we issued it, based on their comments. And so I think the more times they see that, the more time, that's just a good process, and so I think Rob would have appreciated that.
Any questions for Alan? Seeing none, our next item is a report from the Oversight Committee Co-Chair, Manju Ganerewala.
Thank you, Ed. The Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee met yesterday on Monday, November 18th. We received informational reports from FASB Chair Rich Jones and GASB Chair Joel Black. Yesterday, we also heard from Trustee Rick Rysick and FASB liaison to the PCC, Sue Casper, regarding their observations of the PCC meetings that took place on September 23rd and 24th. And I reported on my meeting observations of the FASAC meeting on September 19th. The committee and its participants engaged in a valuable and productive discussion on several important topics. For any stakeholders interested in viewing a recording of yesterday's public session, you can find this on the FAF's website. Now, with regards to the GASB update, the report received from GASB Chair Joel Black and Director Alan Skelton reviewed the main highlights of the third quarter. Many of these matters have already been covered in GASB Chair Black's report during this session. Other topics included an educational session on the GASB's technical inquiry process, which provided the committee with a comprehensive overview of the GASB, of how the GASB receives and triages and either resolves technical inquiries within its scope and jurisdiction, or redirects technical inquiries outside its scope to the proper authority on the given matter, and updates on the good progress made on all other agenda projects and on GASB's financial statement taxonomy work. With regards to the report received from FASB, FASB Chair Rich Jones and Technical Director Jackson Day discuss the FASB's progress in the last quarter. Again, many of these matters have already been covered in FASB's Chair Jones' report during this session. Other topics discussed by the committee included a thorough summary of FASB's draft final report for the revenue from contracts with customers, Topic 606, post-implementation review, which has received the committee's review and input and been shared with the full Board of Trustees, and an overview of FASB's fourth annual investor outreach report. The committee also met with FASAC Chair Mike Morrow. The Chair reviewed the topics that the FASAC has addressed in the past year and provided the committee with an opportunity to ask questions related to these efforts. And lastly, I want to note that the trustees have completed their review of the effectiveness of the Private Company Council and expect to consider the draft of the final report in the near future. Stakeholders will be informed when this report is made available on the FAF website. I want to take this opportunity to say that we truly appreciate the many stakeholders who took time to share their thoughtful perspectives about the PCC, either through comment letters, or through virtual meetings, or through roundtable discussions. We encourage all stakeholders to read our final report once published, and we welcome feedback at any time about FASB, the PCC, or standard-setting in general. And with that, Ed, I conclude my report.
Thanks, Manju. Any questions from Manju? Seeing none, our next report is from FAF Executive Director John Auchenclos. John?
Yeah, thanks, Ed, and good afternoon to everybody. I'd like to start with just a brief update about our budget process. Earlier today, our Board of Trustees approved our 2025 budget, and we will shortly be submitting that to the SEC for its review, which is intended to verify that the proposed FASB accounting support fees are consistent with the requirements of the Sarbanes-Oxley Act. We will stay in contact with the SEC staff to facilitate this process and to answer any questions that they or the Commissioners may have, and we hope that the process will result in an order approving our FASB accounting support fees, and we hope that will be issued no later than the early part of next year. In line with our usual process, following such an order, management would then start working with both the PCAOB and FINRA to begin the assessment and billing of our 2025 FASB and GASB accounting support fees. And importantly, we will post our 2025 budget at that time on the FAF's website. We will be sure to give a further update when the Trustees meet next February. You heard a little earlier in this meeting from Ed about a number of new appointments that were approved by our Board this morning, including four new trustees, a new member of the GASB, and several appointments and reappointments for our Advisory Councils. On behalf of the FAF staff, I'd like to say congratulations to all of these exceptional individuals, and we look forward to working with them in the new year. You will also shortly hear from Ed about our trustees who are departing from our Board. I don't want to steal any of his thunder, but I do want to say on behalf of the FAF and myself that we thank these individuals for their dedicated service to this organization and all of their contributions over the past five years. I'd also just like to note that our hard-working Appointments Committee, together with the FAF's Vice President of Human Resources and her team, have, together with outside consultants, put in yeoman's work on these appointments this year. The scope for this year was significant one to complete, and we know that they've started to look ahead to our 2025 search plans. Finally, I'd just like to say a few words about a meeting that a group of the FAF trustees held last month with some of their counterparts on the Board of Trustees of the International Financial Reporting Standards Foundation, which is the oversight body of the International Accounting Standards Board and the International Sustainability Standards Board. Maintaining an open dialogue with our standard-setting counterparts outside the United States is an important strategic priority, and it was in that spirit that we met with some of the IFRSF trustees. The meeting largely focused on challenges to independent standard-setting, both internationally and in the United States, and the representatives of both Boards expressed satisfaction with the ongoing cooperation of the Boards and the FASB IASB, and acknowledged a desire to continue improving engagement with investors. The group also explored the role of technology, including artificial intelligence, in standard-setting process, and concluded with a commitment to continuing collaboration. And with that, I'll turn things back to you, Ed, unless there are any questions.
Great, thanks, John. Any questions for John? If not, our final report will be from our Treasurer, Manju Ganerewala, on our financials. Manju?
The FAF financial results for nine months ending September 30, 2024 are located on page 153 of the meeting materials. I'm pleased to report that overall, the financial condition of the FAF remains strong. Net assets increased approximately $25 million, primarily related to recognition of the entire year of FASB and GASB accounting support fees in the first quarter. Overall, this amounted to a $7.6 million favorable variance against budget attributed to the following. First, operating expenses were $4.6 million favorable against budget, primarily due to savings of placement fees, and salaries and benefits were lower than budget due to the open positions across the organizations. Second, the reserve for investment income was $2.8 million favorable against budget due to favorable market conditions. And lastly, the total headcount, the current headcount is nine below budget as of 9:30 And lastly, the total headcount, the current headcount is nine below budget as of 9/30/2024 across FASB, GASB, and FAFF. And several of these positions won't be refilled, but some will be refilled in 2025. So overall, good, strong position. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Any questions for Manju? Okay, thanks, Manju. So as John mentioned, we've got some FAFF trustees who will, this will be their last meeting. It's actually a group of five this year. We had a great opportunity over dinner last night to thank them and congratulate them in a more personal way, but today we would like to formally acknowledge their service. And if I may take the prerogative of the chair, the FAFF trustees across the board, no pun intended, are a remarkable group of very experienced people from a variety of different backgrounds, so that we sort of have a broad range of expertise in the room. And I guess what I would say is, these are all experienced, talented people who have choices in how they spend their time, and they've chosen to spend time committed to FAFF, FASB, and GASB, given the importance of independent standard-setting. So we're grateful to all of our trustees. I have to say, this group of five who are rotating off this year, it was a particularly strong group. Bruce Herring, Mike Rollins, Tim Ryan, Larry Salva, and Shandran Thomas. So while we did it informally last night, we do want to formally recognize them. They began their terms in January of 2020, spent the first 18 months or so on Zoom calls, courtesy of a pandemic, but came together even over Zoom and then ultimately, as they got to know the rest of the board personally. And it brought diverse wealth of knowledge and insight and experience to the board. Their terms actually officially conclude December 31st of this year. So I might still call you folks, but so don't go too far too fast. I do have the pleasure of presenting these, I think Stephanie's over there with some proclamations. So Mike Rollins and Tim Ryan unfortunately couldn't be with us here today. But Bruce, can I invite you up to receive your proclamation? Not sure where the camera is, but.
Thank you.
Larry? I regret, for your sakes, that all of these proclamations have our photos on them. It has been a genuine pleasure to serve with all of you, and I hope we can keep up with you in the days ahead. So this is the end of the public session for today's FAFF Board of Trustees meeting. Thanks again to those who've tuned in to the webcast. As we close, let me remind everyone that the next FAFF Board of Trustees meeting will be here in Norwalk on Tuesday, February 25th of 2025. Thanks so much, and have a great day.